It's 6:30.
It's 6:30. I call the October 11th Planning Board meeting to order. And first thing on the agenda is public comment. And that is if anybody here wishes to make a comment for, say, something that they want us to take up in the future, but nothing that is currently on the agenda. Your time to make a comment on that will come as we are dealing with that particular issue. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? Okay. First on our agenda then, the minutes, Mr. Dryer.
Madam Chair, I recommend we postpone the approval of the minutes of September 27th. I've been out of town. I just received the notices, so I'll have them ready for next week.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Pam's not with this remote.
No, she's coming. She's just late.
Because we need her.
Yeah, I know we do before we get on to certain other things.
I just realized we don't have the numbers.
She's planning on attending.
Yeah, no, site plan reviews, there, we don't need everybody, so. Okay. We go on to Planning Board decisions. The applicant is Greg Clancy Construction on behalf of Aaron Vois, Site Plan Review Application for an Accessory Apartment Located at 5 Canopitsit, I hope I did that right, Drive. We have a proposed decision. Who wants to read that one?
Uh, let's see, that's...
Bob?
That's, uh...
I can read it.
Aaron Vois?
Yes.
Okay, draft, October 6th, 2022. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Aaron Vois trustee to construct an attached accessory apartment at 5 Canopitsit Drive under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan Prepared by Tony Penetikus of 5 Canopitsick Drive, Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by J.E. Landers Carley, P.E. Scale 1 inch equals 10 feet. Dated October 20th, 2020. Sheet 1 of 2 only, as well as floor plans entitled Vois Residence 5 Canopitsit Drive, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by Clancy Construction Inc. Scale of 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, as well as Title V Certificate of Compliance and Title V Inspection Form with the following findings. The 13,769 square foot lot is located in the Agricultural B, AGB, zoning district in Coastal Pond, Wacoit Bay, Overlay District. The property contains a 2,084 square foot, three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and a concrete driveway. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit to be located in the basement of the primary dwelling. The property will have a total of four bedrooms, a three-bedroom principal dwelling and a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 782 square feet will be 37.5% of the 2,084 square foot principal dwelling, and the property will provide four parking spaces. Therefore, the proposed complies with Section 240-38I-3E and Section 240-108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The Town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the Planning Board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the Board will conduct its decision, condition its decision accordingly. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw.
I'm going to interrupt momentarily because these are our standard conditions.
Yeah.
And if you'd like to just refer to them...
Okay.
In that manner, because there is no change in them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So...
Standard ADU conditions.
Okay, so, uh... So the conditions are the standard ADU conditions? You just want me to summarize each one, or...
Nope, done.
Just found in the bylaw.
Okay, just found in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's no change to any of them. I think we can do it in that manner.
We passed it.
And there's...
Fruncate it just a little bit.
Yeah. And there's nothing, there's no other condition that we're adding to it?
No.
So, okay.
Okay, so there's motion. May I have a second?
Second.
And is there any further discussion on the Board? Part of the Board on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you. And then, the next one is the applicant is Edward and Lori O'Brien, Site Plan Review Application for an Accessory Apartment Located at 21 Sarah Lane. And it's the same kind of thing. Would you like to do it again, Bob?
Yep, sure. Okay, draft, October 6th, 2022. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Edward L. O'Brien to construct an attached accessory apartment at 21 Sarah Lane under Article 39 of the Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan of Land Prepared by Edward and Lori O'Brien, Proposed Accessory Dwelling Assessors Map 20-05-039B-002. 27 Sarah Lane, Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by J. Doyle Associates. Scale of 1 inch equals 30 feet. Dated June 26th, 2022. With latest revision date of August 5th, 2022, as well as elevations and architectural plans entitled O'Brien Residence 21 Sarah Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by CES Design. Dated April 22nd, 2022. With the most recent revision date of July 20, 2022. Scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, as well as existing dwelling photos with the following findings. The 1,020,661 square foot lot is located in the Agricultural A, AGA, zoning district. The property contains a 2,351 square foot, three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, three sheds, a pool house, and a paved driveway and parking area. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-bedroom attached accessory apartment connected to the principal dwelling by a covered porch. The property will have a total of four bedrooms, a three-bedroom principal dwelling and a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 576 square feet will be 31% of the principal dwelling, and the property will provide four parking spaces, which comply with Section 240-38I-3E and Section 240-108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The Town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the Planning Board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the Board will condition its decision accordingly. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to issues related to the building code and zoning. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. And there are no other conditions other than the standard ADU conditions that are listed.
Bob has moved. May I have a second? Okay, Pam has seconded. Any discussion? Jim?
Just real quickly, I want to make that the Building Commissioner has deemed that it is, meets the bylaw with the ports connection, which our previous Commissioner didn't. A couple weeks back, but this is fine. I just wanted to note that because we've turned things down.
Oh, I know. It may change again in the future.
It may change again, but this looks good to me.
Yep. Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Thank you. Then, next is public meeting slash Planning Board decision. The applicant is Bowler Engineering on behalf of the Town of Falmouth, and this has been continued. Site Plan Review Application to construct a new fire station located at 878 Sandwich Road. And we have a... Would you like to say something?
I'm representing Bowler.
Okay, in case there are questions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, we have a draft decision here, and it's a new one, please. It was on your table, and it's highlighted in yellow. That's probably it, Bob, that you just picked up. Draft?
Yep.
Okay. There have been a few changes in here, and that assures us that the engineering department has said, okay. They've had a chance to review it.
Yeah.
And as you would remember, we did the waivers already.
Yeah.
We voted those at our last meeting, so we probably don't have to repeat that because that's in our record already.
Okay, so just...
Is that agreeable?
Sure.
Anything with the conditions that we...
Uh, yeah, the conditions...
I would read the conditions.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll skip the waivers, but read the conditions.
Yeah, because these aren't standard. This is...
Yeah, yeah. Okay, draft, October 11th, 2022. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Town of Falmouth to construct a fire substation building at 874 Sandwich Road under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Sandwich Road Fire Station, 874 Sandwich Road, Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by Bowler Engineering. 13 sheets, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Dated June 3rd, 2022. With the latest revision date of October 3rd, 2022, as well as an existing conditions plan entitled Existing Conditions Plan of Land, 878, 888, Sandwich Road, Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by Feldman Geospatial. Two sheets, scale of 1 inch equals 30 feet. Dated November 11th, 2021. As well as architectural plans entitled Falmouth Sandwich Fire, Road Fire Station, 878 Sandwich Road, Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by Context Architecture. Sheets A3 dot 1 and A3 dot 2. Scale 3/16 of an inch equals 1 foot. Dated October 6th, 2022. As well as a traffic analysis, a site distance exhibit, and drainage calculations with the following findings. The 85,517 square foot vacant wooded parcel is located in the Agricultural A, AGA, zoning district as well as in the Coastal Pond, Great Pond, Overlay District and the Search and Rescue Overlay District. The parcel is located between the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Falmouth and the George Gaspas Sports Complex on Sandwich Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 10,250-plus-or-minus square foot fire substation building with associated visitor and fire department personnel parking areas, utilities to accommodate the proposed building, new stormwater management features, and associated landscaping elements. The Town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the Planning Board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the Board will condition its decision accordingly. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, one. The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full apostle occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or street opening permit inclusive of site distance sketches that conform to the Town's standards and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. Three. Construction of this project shall follow the Town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions document. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the Planning Board, who is the permitting authority for this project. Four. The applicant shall obtain an approved stormwater permit prior to the issuance of a building permit or the start of construction. Five. Soil exploration data shall be submitted to the Planning Board for review prior to the start of construction of any stormwater infiltration opportunities. And a certificate of completion shall be submitted to the Board following the construction of said stormwater infiltration. Appertun... How do you say that?
Appertinances.
Appertinances. That's my lip, I can't do that anymore.
Okay, Bob has moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question. Throughout all these hearings, we talked about a new fire station. And several times in this motion, it refers to a substation. Is there something changed in that? Why don't we use the same term, new fire station, throughout?
So we just used the verbiage that was included in the application. The application indicated substation. If you'd like it to say fire station, we can do that as well. It's really up to the Board. We're happy to call it a fire station.
Anybody have a problem with that? There's two locations. Second paragraph in the findings, and the first paragraph refers to a fire substation building. And throughout, we've been calling it a new fire station. And I suggest we just put that in for consistency with our rest.
Say that one more time. Second paragraph in the findings.
Second line in the first paragraph motion.
Got it.
Put in, new fire station, delete fire substation building. And the second paragraph in findings has, says fire substation building again, and it should be new fire station.
Station building.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Board? I do have one concern because Jed pointed out that it would be good to go if we got a plantings list.
We did receive that today.
Okay.
And that was the reason for the updated draft motion, because the date of that changed.
Okay.
As well as the architectural plans, so.
Yeah, so we're good to go on that.
We received everything we needed, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? We do have the applicant here, if you have any. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. What?
With the revision?
That we were just, yeah.
Yeah.
That was kind of like a cross-out. I didn't even consider that to be a revision. Probably, shame on me.
You're in charge.
So, anyway, it is now passed, and thank you.
Thank you.
Start putting that spade in the ground, probably. Next on the agenda. The applicant is 237 Old Main LLC. Site Plan Review Application to add over 500 square feet of roof area and more than two parking spaces to the existing property located at 237 Old Main Road. And for the applicant, it's Mike Borselli.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. This is a continued public hearing under Site Plan Review. Attorney Claw couldn't be here tonight as he's on vacation, so I'm pinch-hitting. If there's any detailed issues or concerns about zoning, they might have to be deferred. I know that we're still also waiting for comments from the engineering staff. I think it's because they're still pending ZBA hearing. So this is more of an update. We've submitted revised site plans, and I believe they've responded to all of the issues and concerns that were raised by the Planning Board and Planning Board staff. And I believe that the applicant, through his representative Eric McLaughlin, who I think is also here tonight, if there's any questions for him, I think he's done his best to work with neighbors to provide landscaping screening to mitigate any concerns they have. So the plan revisions that we have made since the last hearing are relatively minor. They included supplemental plantings along the boundary with the neighbor to the north. Some notations on the plan about the intent of the landscape screening. There had been a comment about, I'm going to butter, about a section of your bylaw that required all trees of 4-inch caliper or greater to be located in... I believe that the chairman, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I thought it was the consensus of the Planning Board that locating every tree of 4-inch caliper or greater was sort of an excessive effort. And the intent of the plan is to supplement all of the existing trees, remove any of the invasive plant material, just supplement any existing trees. The applicant will work with the neighbor to do everything they can to hopefully appease any concerns he may have. There were a few differences between the site plan that had been before the historical district and the E site plan before you. Now, this site plan that's before you now should be considered the site plan of record, so that there's no inconsistencies. There was a separate site plan prepared by the architect that's no longer part of the application. And we made some additional minor edits by adding labeling to the plan about site lighting. Intent of the site lighting is to be very subtle, just for safety and security in the form of lighting on the building at each door entrance, and some ground lighting, low foot candle lighting along the common sidewalk that is parallel to the building. There'll be two small carriage lights on the detached garage as well. There's no intent to put any classic street light, lamp posts on the site as it's a residential area. We added drywalls to the plan in response to concerns by the town engineer to address roof runoff from the proposed garage. I think that sums it up. I know that there's still a pending report from the town engineer, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody on the Board have any questions of Mike? Um, I really, I do want to note that there are two letters that we have in here. And I have to say, right up front, with our bylaws the way they are, I don't believe that the Board can do anything about their complaint. And that is the density that is increasing by leaps and bounds in North Falmouth. This being one example of it, where there were old, single-family houses that are now being converted into multi-dwellings. And, I don't... Does anybody wish to comment further on these two letters?
No, just that I understand the concern. And I can, I can see, you know, you drive through North Falmouth, it's very different now. And, you know, you drive through, and even further down in West Falmouth, and you're looking up at the side of the hill, and, you know, it's just stripped of all the vegetation, and you got houses just on steps. It's like we're building on terraces. It's disheartening to me. It's changed the character of the area. And I can understand the concern as...
And the only way, as I said, that anything could be done about it is if our bylaws change to somehow reflect the population's concern.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning allows what the zoning allows.
Yeah. And I should also point out that these two letters, one is from Lori Leitner, and the other is from Priscilla Garrity.
Mm-hmm.
I would just like to add, I thought the letters are well-written and raise a very serious and interesting point. I'm not sure there's much we can do about the existing bylaws that Bob indicates, except maybe creating a special historic district in that area, which we've done elsewhere. But that's a fairly complicated process to do that. That's beyond the scope of this point in Planning Board.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I just want to, just for clarity's sake, you folks have requested, I believe in the past two meetings, that we draft a positive motion. We do have a draft motion for you. But as Mike just pointed out, we're still waiting on engineering review of this, mostly based on the fact that there was an indication that there may be a walkway in the front of the structure that might affect some drainage calculations. So we're just waiting on that sort of clarity. Once that's wrapped up, then I believe engineering can finish up their review, and we can have a positive motion for you, perhaps even at the next meeting.
Well, this is what I was going to also say because the last meeting that we have here on the schedule is our next meeting, October 25th. So that if the issues have not been resolved by then, staff would have to request that we have in hand a request to continue at that point in time.
Right, to extend the decision deadline.
Yes, yes. So I just wanted to point that out, too. So, because this is a site plan review, it's just, we're just going to continue it. We don't need a vote on that until the next meeting. Okay? Any objections to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Next is Mary Harrington. It's a public hearing. Site Plan Review Application to construct an accessory apartment located at 12 Hackmatac Way. at 12 Hackmatac Way. And Paul, you have a notice?
Yes. A notice of this public hearing was published on 9/23/22, and 13 abuddies were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. We've got Mr. Amet here tonight.
Good evening, Mrs. Carefoot, members of the board, members of the public. I'm Bob Amet. I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent the applicant, Mary Harrington. Mary is here, and the plan has been prepared by Mike Borselli, who's also here. I think, and it's suggested almost by the staff's referral and the engineering department's referral, that this is really a model accessory apartment application. Checks all of the boxes, meets all of the requirements, and it's a perfect site. The Hackmatac Way is a short dead-end road off of the Woods Hole Road, a little bit before Oyster Pond Road. And 12 Hackmatac Road is at the dead-end. It abuts 30 acres of permanent conservation property owned by the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. So, it's a, and it's a 26,000-square-foot lot, so it's plenty large enough for an accessory apartment as proposed. If you've read your staff report, I would feel I could stop right there, because it actually checks all of the requirements. And this is, as you know, a byright use, but subject to site plan review. One thing I did want to comment on is that we're proposing to put in a new five-bedroom denitrification septic system. Denitrification is required to have more than three bedrooms. I believe that's the number allowed without it. But we're in a, in the Quisset Harbor Coast to Pond overlay district. Actually, we're just barely in it. But because of that, in order to have the number of bedrooms that would be possible in this house, we'd need a denitrification septic system. Now, when I say possible, that's because there is a walkout basement that has three rooms in it. They've been used for storage and for artwork. But if you add those, plus the two new rooms in the accessory apartment above the new garage, plus two bedrooms on the existing second floor of the house, plus a room used as an office on the first floor, you're up to six rooms that could be used as bedrooms. And I believe the total number of rooms in the house is 11. And as you know, Title V says that once you have a house with more than eight rooms in it, you determine the necessity of the size of the septic system by taking the total number of rooms, dividing it in half, and rounding down. That kind of, that gives us, a five-bedroom system is required for this house as proposed, we felt. And actually, there only will be probably two rooms in the existing house used as bedrooms, as has been the case, and then there'll be the one bedroom in the accessory apartment. But we have a large denitrifying septic system, so we're doing a good thing. I asked Ms. Harrington how she really intended to use the accessory apartment. You know, some people create the accessory apartment and may just use it for family. But Mary is a senior administrator at the Marine Biological Laboratory. She's very aware of the need for apartments to serve students and employees of the scientific institutions. And though she can't be sure that's where the tenant will come from, that's what she expects, that she'll find tenants who are associated with nearby scientific institutions. If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Mike Borselli can answer technical questions if there are any. But I think we, our application answers all the questions, and there wasn't much of concern in any of the referrals that you've received.
Anybody have questions on the board?
Yeah, just a little clarification. It says, "The application includes construction of a 567-square-foot one-bedroom accessory apartment over a new attached two-car garage." So, is it a new attached two-car garage that they're going to then add an apartment to? Or is the two-car garage and the apartment completely new from the ground up?
The plan in front of you shows, if I can use this, this is all-new construction.
Okay, so there isn't a garage there now?
There's no garage there now.
Okay, that's all.
So, in fact, the driveway presently comes right along the southeasterly border of the property, right along, and actually crossing onto the Environmental Trust property. That will be, that encroachment will be eliminated. Also, this shed in the back will be removed. So, this is a new structure, and if I go down here, and thank you, Melinda, for loading this, you can see the garage, that's all-new structure attached to the house.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Any from the public, or comments that you wish to make on this? If the board is satisfied with everything, we can ask staff to prepare a decision for our next meeting on the 25th?
Yes.
Okay.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick, if I could ask staff to give us an update on how many accessory apartments were approved, a list?
Now, three more than you did at the last meeting.
I know, I know, but I'd like to hear the number, I don't remember the number.
Forty-seven, I think.
We were in the 40s, and not all of them.
I think you should bring it up every time we do, and now this is number 50.
I remember Charlotte saying 44, so.
We should just keep hearing that, because we worked hard to pass this bylaw, and it's a reinforcing issue.
You're right, Jim. It is good that we know that. Yep. The next is Thomas Griffin, site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment located at 46 Wheelhouse Circle. Paul, notice this, please.
Notice of the public meeting for 46 Wheelhouse Circle was published on 9/23/22. Six abuddies were notified by regular mail.
So, you're going to present to us tonight. Thank you.
Hello.
We have your names.
Yes, my name's Thomas Griffin, Jr., here with my father, Thomas Griffin, Sr. I'm a schoolteacher in town, and my father is a veteran and contractor, who's helping me with the project. I live at 46 Wheel, oh, thank you, by the way, in advance for our time, and appreciate that. Live at 46 Wheelhouse Circle, at the very end cul-de-sac. We're pretty much the only property, because we have a power line going right between, right here, through the cul-de-sac. That creates a pretty big buffer zone back up to Ballymead, and the private course is over in this area here. But we're looking to construct a 760-square-foot accessory apartment, be a true in-law for my wife's parents, be the intention. We have a very large house, and, you know, there was a lot of existing space. We added a small dormer, just to make it more livable and to create egress above our garage.
I believe it's irrelevant whether it's for in-laws.
It is, but that's nice to know.
I just want to point it out, you could rent this to anyone. It's not restricted to in-laws, and not under our bylaw.
They know that.
Okay, well, they said in-laws.
But that's their chance, so, and that's fine.
We're approving it for any use.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a procedural comment. The site plan review by Len Scully does not show the locus. It's very helpful to us to put that on the drawings when they do their site plan.
Do you want me to bring it up on the GIs?
No. So, they described pretty well where it is. You're okay with that.
It's a procedural referral.
Yeah. We usually ask for that on, sometimes we give it, sometimes we don't. It's helpful for us to be able to place it where it really is. I was reading, and I think you talked with Scott McGann, because he said he's familiar with the house, and he's been in and out of there over the last 10 years or so, and he thought there were already two apartments up there, and he asked that you get in touch with him to clarify that. So, could you clarify that for the board?
Yes, I believe that went to my father, and he hasn't got a response.
I haven't got a response from him. I call, I sent, went to the office personal and went to talk to the secretary there, and told them about the situation, what we're doing. I still haven't heard anything back.
Still haven't heard.
I believe he was out with extended medical leave, so I think he's back in the office now.
Okay.
Likely, he's just getting back in into the fold.
This was Scott, Scott.
Scott McGann.
Scott McGann, yeah.
The health agent. Okay. So, I don't know what to do about that, because it raised a little flag for me to say, what is this?
We can inquire with Scott. We'll inquire with Scott and have him get in touch with on the next week.
And so, we'll just continue this until our next meeting on the 25th. Does the board, does anybody else on the board have any questions of them? No.
No, not at this time.
Anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this? So, thank you, and that'll get cleared up, and you can appreciate their, our health issues sometimes. Yes?
We've already had the frames, all the inspections, pre-inspections, everything deleted. And we're ready, we're putting She-Rock up and stuff like that, so there'll be a final inspection course after everything's done. So, we're going through the proper channels to do this thing legally.
Yeah, that's not the question, but when something like this is in our records, we have to have it.
Understood.
Straightened out, so that, you know, in the future, somebody doesn't wave a hand and say, "You didn't look at that." So, I appreciate your patience with that, and we will see you on the 25th, and hopefully this will all be squared away by then. Yes?
Perhaps if you don't have any issues with the application as presented, we could draft a positive motion, we could work with Scott in the interim, and, you know, we can communicate with the applicant before the next meeting, and if everything gets ironed out, they're ready, they're ready to move.
We can have a positive motion at that point, if it gets all straightened out.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll continue this until the 25th. Okay. Okay, here we come with Hui, special permit application to 40-2.1 exempt uses, and a site plan review application for redevelopment of Hui's waterfront, including construction of new three-story building, together with site amenities to support Hui's use located at 86 Water Street. And we do have two notices, because we are looking at a special permit, and we are looking at a site plan review, both. So, Paul.
Yep. Notice of this public meeting for the project in Woods Hole was published on September 23rd, 2022, and September 29th. Thirteen abuddies were notified by regular mail.
In both cases, by regular mail with a special permit?
It was all done at once.
Pardon?
It was all done in one.
Oh, it was, okay. Thank you.
Ready to go?
You have the floor. Please introduce yourself.
I will. My name is Rob Munir. I'm the vice president for marine facilities and operations at Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, and I'm here with a group of colleagues that I'll introduce. Leslie Ann McGee, who's the program manager for this project. Dave DeRoche, he's our facilities manager. Liza Cox is our external counsel. Jeff Edwardson, representing the architect. Joe Choi and Katie Moulton, who are with WSP, they're the marine engineering design firm, and Randy Hart, transportation engineer. So, that's the crowd that's here. You're going to hear from myself, Jeff, and Liza tonight. And so, the idea was that we would try to give you an overview of the project and provide some context. So, I know you've got a nice package, and I'm sure you've gone through it with a fine-toothed comb, but the idea was to spend a half hour or so running through this, so that you can sort of see it, and then be in a position to ask us some questions about it. So, if that's okay, that's what we're planning to do.
Perfect.
Okay, great.
As you know, there were a couple of members of the planning board there, and I want to say thank you. That was an amazing tour.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming, and I know not everybody was able to make it. So, we're going to, I'm going to take you on a little bit of a virtual tour here for those that weren't there, maybe as a reminder for those of you that were, so thanks for that. I'm sure you all have a sense of Hui and what our mission is. Our main mission is to understand the ocean, and then to communicate that with the public. We do this with what we would say four pillars, you might say, research, engineering, education, and operations. And I represent the, sort of, the operations side, along with Dave DeRoche, from a facilities perspective. But those are the, sort of, the main things we do in order to accomplish our mission. We are a world leader. We're private, independent, nonprofit. We are not part of the government. We do a lot of work on behalf of the government through a government grant system, but the fact that we're a private nonprofit makes us unique in our space. Most of our peer institutions are parts of universities. Access to the sea is absolutely critical for what we do. It's our stock in trade. It's what we've been doing at our waterfront since 1930. And by access to the sea, I don't mean just ships, I mean all manner of methods to get our scientists, engineers, and practitioners into the ocean. So, that includes, in addition to ships, underwater vehicles, autonomous submersibles, diving, oceanographic sensors, ocean observing systems, all manner of techniques in order to get access. So, our waterfront is more than just a dock. It is a research facility that allows us to do our work. It's been there since 1930. It's had, gone through several incarnations. Just that history lesson is kind of a fun one that I'd be happy to share sometime. But the current incarnation is about 53 years old. It was finished in the late 60s, and it is now past its engineering design life. We are continuing to operate in a very good way, but I think particularly for those of you that saw it, you can sort of see that it's aged. One of Dave DeRoche's regular jobs is to keep maintaining it, and we invest a lot of money each year in order to allow us to continue our operations. But doing that really is, at this stage of the game, throwing good money after bad. It's also a site that we have built over time, somewhat like a New England farmhouse. We've accreted all these buildings that are now suboptimal, and so, it's an opportunity, when we reconsider our waterfront, to do something that is really built for the future, built for the way oceanography is going to be done for the next 80 years. The other thing that's really important for us to understand is that we sit on the waterfront in the face of sea level rise and other climate change impacts. So, a facility that we build here has to bear that in mind. And this has really actually provided us an opportunity to do something creative in terms of how we solve that problem. And when you hear some of the details, you'll, I think, begin to appreciate the fact that, you know, as an oceanographic institution, not only are we going to build something that we can continue to tie our vessels up at, but it's going to be, hopefully, a model for ways that you might address this climate change issue. The obvious things you see are the big ships that we tie up there. It's the home port for the Atlantis, which is a 275-foot research vessel, and the mothership for the submersible Alvin, and the Neil Armstrong, slightly smaller, 250 feet, which is a general-purpose research vessel. Armstrong, right now, happens to be in the Arctic, and the Atlantis happens to be in the Gulf of Mexico. But that's the home port for those two ships. We also have a small coastal research vessel called the Tioga, a 60-footer. And then we entertain vessels from all over the world that are in the research business and related to it as guests to come in berth at our facility. So, a lot of times, our peer institutions will have their ships come to our place. There's also an economic aspect to what we do. Hui is a 275 million-a-year operation, so we're a significant economic driver, employer, et cetera. And just the waterfront itself, just the part of the facility that we're talking about is about a $50 million-a-year operation. So, there's quite a bit of throughput and economic benefit. So, why are we doing this? The system, the facility's old. On the upper right is some of Dave DeRoche's handiwork. That's one of the major repairs. We've been investing about $1 million a year in maintenance, and so, this really is something that we obviously have to address, as well as the notion that we have to be responsive to sea level rise. So, our goal is to replace this waterfront facility, both the dock and the building, and do it in an optimized way and in a way that anticipates sea level rise. The lower picture is a picture of Northeastern Riley a few years back, and Dave's office is just to the left out of the picture, and that's when he has to wear his rubber boots to work. So, a little bit of a, sort of, a site view, this is looking, obviously, from a drone back towards Water Street. So, in the foreground is the seaward end of the dock, and that sort of faces south. It's actually about 70 feet deep there, which is one of the extraordinarily unique aspects of this location. It allows us to bring big oceanographic research vessels into this relatively modest-sized port. In the middle is a test well. So, as I mentioned, in addition to this being a place we tie up ships and put divers in the water, we have a test well that is used for research. And so, almost every day, there's something being put in the water, it's a vehicle being tested, a sensor being tested, and so, that's a really valuable asset that we want to preserve and, in fact, enhance in a rebuilt facility. On the right-hand side is the east berth, the west is the west berth, that shows the Armstrong tied up there. And then in the sort of background is the sort of perimeter of the particular project, the Bigelow Building, which is the original building from 1930, the one with the cupula. The one to the right of that is the Smith Building, and that's, those two buildings front Water Street. And then, sort of, between Smith and the waterfront dock is the Island Building, which is, interestingly enough, a building that straddles both the dock and land. In fact, the bulkhead goes right through the middle of it. And that's one of the reasons why this has to be both a building project as well as a dock project. And in the right, to the right of Island is the Alvin High Bay, and you'll see some pictures of that. That's, we call it that because every four or five years, Alvin comes back here, we do a major overhaul, and so, it's sort of named after its famous namesake. But it also is used for lots of other things, and that type of flexible space is really valuable for what we do. We also have some small boats, small boat slips on the east side, and so, now I'm going to take you on a slightly more, sort of, detailed look. So, here we are, you see the arrow on the upper left, and that's sort of the view from you're making there, and that's basically adjacent to Bigelow, looking seaward. In that case, the Atlantis is tied up there. You can see some small floating docks and some kit on them. That is sort of a makeshift robotics port, and one of the things that we plan to do with our new facility is to have a purpose-built robotics port in approximately that location. Another thing to take away from this picture is this was a day we were hosting an entrepreneurial's forum, entrepreneurial forum of folks that are developing new technologies for... forum, entrepreneurial forum of folks that are developing new technologies for working in the ocean. And so our waterfront is also a place that we gather people that are practitioners and to showcase what's going on. So now we're on the sort of southeast side, looking sort of shoreward at the test well itself. And this is a visual showing one of our autonomous robots called Sentry being tested in the test well. And so a day like this would be a time when we might be determining if the buoyancy is correct for that particular vehicle and before we take it out and actually put it in the This is a view looking seaward from where the, near the small boat port, and I'll show you that in a second. But what we're demonstrating here is the Alvin actually going into the high bay. The high bay is to the right of those containers. And this is the type of lift and material handling that we have to do in order to do our business. This is a view inside the high bay, and actually the Alvin is somewhat disassembled here, and what you're looking at in the foreground is the personnel sphere that holds three people, seven-and-a-half feet in diameter. It's a little bit cozy. And that's why we need this kind of high bay space to do work like this. And just for a point of interest, Alvin just finished a series of dives in the Gulf of Mexico and had a very interesting mission that was looking at oil seeps. And it was described by one of the pilots as a rain wall of oil coming out of the seafloor. So this is a naturally occurring seep, nothing to do with our oil and gas industry that was being studied out there. So here we are now, looking shoreward towards the Eel Pond Bridge, and you can see the wave screen and the small boat port that exists now. And that's a really important aspect of the work we do, is access to small boats. And so what, in our redevelopment ideas, we are improving these, but this is one location that is very similar, will end up being very similar to the way it is now, similar location, some minor adjustments. So looking down on the site, this is a sort of an engineering drawing that sort of gives you the way things are today. And the blue is the dock. And the line that is hashed that shows the demarcation between the blue and the white is the bulkhead. So you can see it runs right through the center of Island. And then there's a bit of a panhandle on the sort of west side of the dock, which is really the upside of this, the top of this drawing. And then it shows the existing buildings. Bigelow and Smith are on Water Street. And then seaward of Smith is what we call the connector, the Smith Connector, the Alvin High Bay, a small laboratory we call the Flume, and then the Island Building. So effectively, the project is, everything's sort of seaward of where Smith is. So we have to do some enabling work, and that's a term that we've sort of acquired for, you know, how do we get to the point where we actually do a project? The first thing was to analyze and understand the sea level rise issue and storm surges. That work is done, and now we have taken what we've learned from doing that and applied it to the design that we're going to be using and that we'll be presenting shortly. We've also relocated parking that was on the dock, just shoreward of where the small boat port was, and put that in the, what we call the shiver parking lot, which was a small expansion of that parking lot we did about four or five years ago in anticipation of this project. And then we have to relocate other non-water dependent programs. This is an opportunity to get things off of the waterfront that don't have to be there so that what we put there really is focused on being, having access to the sea. So an example is, we had a mooring and rigging shop that put moorings together. We've already moved that up to the Quistit Camp. We have a machine shop that is still on the waterfront. It's in the Island Building. In fact, that bulkhead runs right under the floor of the machine shop. That's going to end up being relocated. So that all sort of falls into this notion of enabling work that we need to do in order to get our project started. So the, sort of the punchline then is how things are going to look when we're done, roughly. And this shows essentially the key elements of what, we're going to get some details from Jeff. And Jeff, next. We're going to relocate the test well from its location on the east face to the south face. The reason we want to do that is that there's deep water there, much deeper than what we have at the current test well, and the user community would really like to have seventy feet rather than the thirty-five, the forty feet we have in its current location. So that's the primary motivation to relocating it out there. The small boat slips are slightly reconfigured. You can see them at the lower part of the picture there. And there was a notch, and maybe I should have. Roughly here, where the bulkhead actually has the notch back. If we move that notch, we just have a straight shot all the way to where the small boat slips are. And let me see if I can get back to that. This isn't moving. Okay, well, you'll have to take my word for it. Anyhow, so we're going to move that notch out. We're going to create that robotics port in the upper part of the picture. And then we put our new waterfront building right behind Smith, all ashore. Nothing's straddling the, which means the footprint you'll see is a bit smaller than all the buildings that we have as a footprint, and the actual square footage of, gross square footage is smaller than all the aggregate number of buildings that we have there. So that's the high-level sort of context, and I'd like to turn it over to Jeff to take a little bit deeper dive into some of the details. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Jeff Abramson. I'm an architect with the firm Peat. We're out of Austin, and we've been working with Rob and his team on the new waterfront building as part of the seawater project. I'll quickly go through the first few slides because Rob has hit on many of the major points here, but essentially, looking at the existing site plan here, the two key identifiers are, one, the location of the existing pile-supported dock, and as Rob mentioned, going, cutting through the existing Island Building. In addition to that, is the AE zone delineation. We can't lose track that the site sits in a floodplain, and it's bifurcated around the perimeter with the VE zone. And on the interior side of the site, you can see the AE twelve zone. So for us, when we're looking at citing the building, this is one of the constraints that, when we're trying to cite the footprint of the building, that we want to be very much aware of as well. As Rob mentioned, the intent here is to demo roughly forty-eight thousand gross square feet of construction on the site. So the buildings that you see here on the image in red, Island, the Alvin High Bay, the Connector Building, and some ancillary exterior buildings such as the Flume and the modular trailers. Essentially, everything outside of Smith and Bigelow, which are on Water Street, are proposed to be demolished as part of this project. The building footprint demo of the area in red is roughly, or just shy of twenty-six thousand square feet. So that's the footprint of the kind of aggregate of different parts and pieces on the site. As you can see today, a portion of the Alvin High Bay and the Flume Building extend into the velocity zone as well. The footprint of the new waterfront building, as Rob mentioned, the idea is to, one, locate the building fully landward of the existing bulkhead and do so with enough room that the existing bulkhead can be constructed, and there's no interference between the structure of the bulkhead and the structure of the building. As you can see here, the new waterfront building will be roughly a hundred-and-twenty feet closer or landward than the existing Island Building. And there's a couple of important reasons for doing this beyond just getting the building landward. Today, the waterfront site is rather constrained out there. Those who walk the site and understand it, there's a lot going on on a daily basis in terms of a large of equipment maneuvering on site, a lot of vehicular circulation. So by moving the building landward, we make it safer, safer working environment out onto the dock. The second issue is fire department access. By relocating the footprint closer to the Smith and Island Building, we now can safely get a fire truck around the building, in and out, without having to tee out onto the dock. As mentioned, the new waterfront building footprint is eighteen thousand, just a little over eighteen thousand square feet. So we're looking at a thirty percent reduction in kind of the footprint of structure out on that site. Taking another look from an aerial perspective, Water Street is in the foreground. You see Smith and Bigelow fronting on Water Street, and Island outstraddling the yellow line, which is the existing bulkhead. You can see the location of the proposed building footprint located behind Smith and, between Smith and Island. So those of you who are familiar with the site kind of get a sense of where the new building footprint is, much more landward than the existing building. So in addition, as Rob mentioned, in addition to the reduction in building footprint, the gross floor area of the new building, as you folks saw on the submitted plans, is just shy of forty-five thousand gross square feet. So it's a slight reduction in overall gross square footage on the site. And as Rob mentioned, the intent here is to move any non-dock-dependent program off the waterfront. As you can imagine, it's a costly endeavor to build down here, and so we want to be very, very mindful of the type of program and the size of the building that's being constructed on the site here. In addition to the building, a couple other site elements to make everyone aware of. One is the green area to the east of the new waterfront building, at the south, at the bottom of the screen here. So as part of the Order of Conditions from the Conservation Commission, as part of this project, the existing today, we didn't really touch on this, there's an area called Paul's Mall. It's a very small area of, I would call it lawn, but it's largely been taken over by various storage units and other things as well. But that lawn represents a certain amount of pervious planted area, and was being proposed in the new building is an equivalent amount of planted area to the east side of the site. And the idea is that this gets pulled away from where the actual working dock is, so we don't have that kind of same condition that exists today with Paul's Mall. In addition, Eliza will speak to this a little bit more shortly. We're providing nine parking spaces on the site, four of which would be accessible per ADA and MAAB requirements. And then there are two loading zones identified on the site, and I know from the staff report we received this morning, there was a question about the size of the loading zones. So those two rectangles you see there are approximately fourteen feet wide by forty-five feet long. We've aggregated the trash and recycling today. There's two six-yard dumpsters, six-yard dumpsters on the site. The intent is to locate them within a metal-grated enclosure adjacent to the building as well. What you're seeing is an overlay now of the floor plan, the ground floor plan of the new waterfront building onto the site. And the design of the floor plan really has been optimized to create optimal adjacencies between the interior dock program, interior program of the building, and exterior program of the dock. So the primary space on the ground floor, as you see in the dark blue with the three large arrows, that's a new high bay space. So Rob showed the picture of Alvin and the existing Alvin High Bay. This is a new high bay space as well with three large doors that face to the south. They're directly accessible out onto the dock. What you see in light blue are truck turning radiuses, so we're really taking a close look at being able to get vehicles safely out onto the dock and then into the high bay spaces without having to maneuver a lot of the kind of existing material on the site. To the north side of the screen, and the same in color, those are the OSL labs. So those labs have a lot of the autonomous vehicles, and they, what they do on a daily basis is the robotics port that you see at the top of the screen there, essentially, these autonomous vehicles are brought out to that robotics port, put in the water, and then extracted out. So there's a lot of movement between those, between that program within the building and out onto the robotics port. The other two elements to touch on with the ground floor plan in orange in the center screen, there is a small, we call it advanced fabrication component to the project. Essentially, this is a repair shop that supports the activities that are going on, both in the OSL workspaces and the high bay. And at the bottom or east side of the building, in light blue, Rob mentioned dive operations. This is a diver locker room. So folks who are diving in that test well will come out, and this is where they change. The building itself has two entrances, one on the east and one on the west-hand side. The east-hand side would be seen as the primary visitor and staff entrance. The entrance on the west would be more for staff moving between Smith, Bigelow, and the new waterfront building. And the last item to point out on this diagram are the purple dots that say MARSAC and gate. Essentially, because HOE does a lot of work with the Department of Defense, there are certain times in which there are certain vessels tied up to the various berths in which there are certain Coast Guard regulations that need to go into effect. Essentially, a portion of the site needs to be locked down to meet security requirements for protecting those vessels. So what you're seeing is a layering of security between the gates you kind of see today out at Water Street, but then a secondary line that says MARSAC, that's the high-security zone. So the intent is that Dave and his operations has the ability to control that in certain conditions. Switching to looking at building, looking at the section and grading of the site. As Rob mentioned, seawater and resiliency is a major driver for the project, and as you see by this section, which is cut through the middle of Water Street, looking west. So on the right-hand side, you see Eel Pond. On the left, you see the pile-supported dock with Water Street towards the right-hand side. Essentially, the existing grade in and around the site from Water Street out to the dock ranges between six-and-a-half and seven feet elevation. That's from a datum, datum line. The FEMA flood maps, base flood elevation is elevation twelve. So if you think about that, that's essentially five feet higher than what the grade is roughly running through the village. And as you can see, it runs essentially halfway through or mid-level through the existing buildings on the site. Based on the analysis, the early sea level rise analysis projections on the project, the proposed dock, the existing dock, as I mentioned, at elevation six-point-five, the proposal here is to elevate the dock to a minimum of elevation nine. So that's an additional two-and-a-half feet above the general, these are nominal numbers, obviously, but above the existing dock elevation. That is what is seen as the near-term forecast for sea level rise for the site. In addition to that, there's the potential for both the dock and the building, and I'll mention this in a minute, to be adapted even further beyond that if we're looking out longer projections, an additional one-and-a-half feet to elevation ten-point-five. So essentially, you can see the near-term case and the future-term case for sea level rise. Looking at the building in section, essentially, the building has been designed, the ground floor at two different elevations. The lower elevation at the dock, nominally nine, but the building itself at elevation ten-point-five due to grading, we're always trying to grade up to the building to shed water away from that. Essentially, the lower portion there of the building that includes the functionally-dependent dock uses, these are your high bay spaces, your OSL spaces, that can be modified in the future. Essentially, the floor can be raised an additional one-and-a-half feet in order for the building to adapt. So when HOE is investing in a building like this, it's not for ten, twenty, thirty years, we're looking in the fifty-to-one-hundred-year time span. So the buildings on the water today need to be adaptable to future conditions. So the floor can be raised up, the dock can be raised up in the future as well. The higher portion of the ground floor at elevation fourteen, those are the support spaces, so spaces that are not functionally-dependent. We spent a lot of time talking to the FEMA flood, FEMA representatives, the county flood representative, and talked through this kind of approach here. So essentially, we've raised the portion of the building on the ground floor that's not functionally-dependent. In addition, on the upper levels now, we have spaces that don't necessarily need to be on the water. So on the ground floor, that's where you have some of the research laboratories that are actually supporting the work that's happening down in the high bay. Essentially, smaller objects can be brought up and worked on on the second floor. And then the third floor, that's where we primarily put the elevated mechanical systems for the buildings. So the mechanic, the building mechanical systems are primarily housed on the right-hand side of the third floor there. On the left-hand side, that's where the port office and support and conference and classroom spaces. So as Rob mentioned, education is a big component of, you know, HOE's mission too. So on the third floor, in addition to having the port offices which oversee the operation, there's a, there's a conference space and classroom space as well. Just talking, briefly wrapping up on the, the ground floor and the floodproofing of the building, as I mentioned, all the functionally-dependent uses at dock love. the building, as I mentioned, all the functionally-dependent uses at dock level, elevation ten and a half, and your kind of support spaces up at elevation fourteen. So, there's a lot that's going on here in terms of stairs and elevators and whatnot to go between the two, two different floors. And again, as mentioned, there was a lot of discussion with the town building commissioner, with FEMA, and the county flood liaison as well to kind of go through and advance this discussion. Finally, for the spaces that are down at dock elevation, it doesn't mean that they're completely unprotected. They're actually, they're dry floodproofed. So, essentially, we're creating a bathtub around those areas with deployable flood barriers at each one of the entry doors. And essentially, both the state building code, and I also believe a provision in your local zoning as well, and the talk about the use of dry floodproofing. So, this bathtub, quote unquote, will be designed and engineered by the structural engineers, and as part of the submission process, you get an affidavit associated with that design as well. The final item I want to talk about is the, the height of the building. I've spent a lot of time explaining why the building's elevation is set where it is relative to existing grade. To clarify, the, the local zoning ordinance calculating building height says you do it from existing grade. So, essentially, because we're lifting the building up for sea level rise, that doesn't matter in terms of calculating the height, quote unquote, of the building. So, we had a discussion with the building commissioner and kind of affirmed the approach here. Within our, within the district, the maximum height permitted for community service is not to exceed fifty feet. And that fifty feet, as I just mentioned, is calculated from the mean level of natural grade across a building line, across all street sides of the proposed building. So, for us, the street side of the building is the north elevation facing Water Street, and the calculated mean grade is six-point-seven-eight feet. So, that's where we're starting from, and the elevation of the building is permitted would be fifty feet from that. There's a couple of different ways to calculate the, stipulate the mean, the height of the building at the roof level. One is to mean height between eaves and ridge. The other, however, is rooftop mechanical equipment is not exempt. And because we have a portion in the building where we have an elevator override in a screened-in area that exceeds the mean height of our pitch of our roofs, to us, that then becomes the dominating height of the building. That's the most onerous condition. And when we look at the building height from the calculated mean grade of six-point-seven-eight feet, our building height is fifty-five-point-two feet. So, five-point-two feet in exceedance of the allowable fifty feet. There was a question in the staff report as well about elevation sixty-two versus the height of fifty-five-point-two feet. So, sixty-two is the elevation of the elevator override relative to the datum, the NAVD-88 datum. So, that's the elevation. However, the building height itself needs to be calculated from the six-point-seven-eight feet. So, hopefully, that kind of clears the difference between the elevation versus the building We thought it'd be helpful to show a diagram of the proposed building relative to Bigelow because most folks understand and know that. I would say the ridge line of the proposed building is slightly taller than the ridge line of Bigelow, but the, our kind of elevator override relative to the cupola of Bigelow were about seventeen and a half feet lower than that as well. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on building and site lighting because I know this is an important consideration. There's a lot of outdoor area associated with the building. So, on the left-hand side, so the new waterfront building will look to control lighting control system with nighttime dimming and occupancy sensors. This is so at nighttime, lights aren't blaring through the building at all times. And we can even have the ability to blow shades in the evening for areas of the building that have more glass than other areas to minimize light leakage. In terms of the selection of site fixtures, entirely use of dark sky IDC compliant fixtures. Minimal lighting, again, to provide a safe and code compliant working environment. We're not looking to do anything beyond that. The use of task lighting for specific activities, so when vessels are in port or there are specific activities associated with using one of the cranes, they come associated with task lighting. So, you're not lighting the entire dock, you're focusing task lighting on what you're doing. And fixtures are dimmable and can be controlled via time lock. So, these are not just dumb on-off fixtures, they have that ability as well. And I think with that, I'd like to pass it off to Eliza.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish in Hyannis and am pleased to be here this evening. I'm going to talk about the relief that's being requested, and then I'll walk through a couple of slides and wrap up. So, HOE has submitted two applications to this board. One is for site plan review. HOE, as a nonprofit educational corporation, has the benefit of the Dover Amendment, which is Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-A, Section Three. And the way the courts and this board and your town council in the past have interpreted your site plan review provisions for uses like HOE that are exempt, is that site plan review is limited to compliance with the reasonable dimensional requirements set forth in the bylaw. And so, that's what we'll focus on this evening. At the same time, your zoning bylaw allows for exempt uses like HOE, an applicant to seek a special permit under Section Two-Forty-Two-Dash-One from the dimensional requirements that it needs relief from, and HOE has also submitted that application. So, we have site plan review and the special permit before you. This slide shows those dimensional requirements from which the special permit is requested under Section Two-Forty-Two-Dash-One, and I'll go through each of those in the course of my presentation. As indicated on this slide, the project complies with the majority of the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. It's located within the public use, the PU zoning district. In terms of lot frontage, a hundred feet is required. The site has over three-hundred-and-twenty feet of frontage. In terms of lot size, one-point-zero-three acres is required. The site as a whole contains two-point-nine-two acres. One-point-nine-nine acres is the sort of land portion of the site excluding the pier. With reference to building coverage, as you saw and Jeff indicated on his prior slides, the proposed redevelopment will reduce the amount of footprint, the amount of building coverage on the site by about seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty square feet. And in terms of the percent of coverage on the lot covered by buildings, based upon prior plans endorsed by this planning board in two thousand two, sorry, two thousand three and two thousand four for the site, showing the site at two-point-nine-two acres, the proposed building coverage is twenty-seven percent. If, however, you just looked at the landward portion of the site, so based on that one-point-nine-nine acres, then the proposed coverage would be thirty-nine-point-eight percent. Either way, the project meets the building coverage limitations in the PU zoning district and significantly reduces the amount of building coverage as compared to what exists right now. With respect to setback for the new building, it is over a hundred-and-seventeen feet from Water Street, so it meets the front yard setback requirements, and there are no side or rear yard setbacks within this zoning district. Moving to the special permit, this slide shows the general special permit criteria that's contained in your bylaw. As I think this board has seen tonight, and for those of you who are familiar with the site and have been on the site visit, I think we can all agree this is a highly unique property within the community. And in view of the unique and particular characteristics of this site, which is a working waterfront port, we submit that the requested relief to accomplish this redevelopment may be appropriately granted, and I'll walk through each of those areas where which dimensional relief is being requested. First, with respect to building height, the zoning bylaw in the public use district allows three stories or fifty feet. Here, as you saw from the plans, the proposed building contains three stories as allowed under the bylaw. Utilizing the building height calculation which Jeff just walked you through, the proposed building height in feet is fifty-two, fifty-five-point-two feet. Accordingly, the proposed building exceeds the zoning maximum by about five-point-two feet. With respect to the special permit, though, we submit, submit to you that the relief that we're requesting is justified here, given the unique site circumstances, as this additional height is directly related to project resiliency and to meeting code requirements, the regulatory requirements. And the height remains compatible with the surrounding area. As was indicated on prior slides, the site is located within an A and a V FEMA flood zone, and to meet the state building code requirements and the requirements within the floodplain section of your zoning bylaw, the non-functionally-dependent portions of the building have to be elevated at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Unlike some jurisdictions, the town of Falmouth does not change how the height of a building is calculated for developments within a floodplain, in the floodplain. Accordingly, an applicant is penalized, if you will, in terms of lost building height under zoning, notwithstanding that other proportions of your zoning bylaw require the building to be elevated, and the building code also requires the building to be elevated. As illustrated on the slides that Jeff went through earlier, this project is being designed to be adaptable in the face of climate change and coastal resiliency. These measures include, as Jeff mentioned, elevating the pier by an additional two and a half feet, and designing the first floor of the building so that it can be elevated by an additional one and a half feet in the future if the dock is elevated, all while still maintaining adequate height within those high bays for HOE's equipment to be picked up and lifted in connection with their work. These regulatory and resiliency measures result in the added height of the building for which we've requested this relief. And yet, even with the increased building height, the project's height remains consistent with other nearby institutional buildings in the area. And as you saw from the prior graphics that Jeff put together, even on this very particular property, it is lower than the building height of Bigelow, which, under your zoning bylaw, is calculated at seventy-two-point-three-one feet. Finally, by also minimizing the building footprint and going up versus out, and citing the proposed building, building closely behind Smith and Bigelow, this redevelopment will open up view corridors from Water Street as you look out towards the water. With reference to parking as, as an active waterfront port, there are frankly better uses on the site than having a large or significant amount of parking spaces, which could interfere with dock operations, safety, access and egress, and circulation. Therefore, we have requested relief from the bylaw's onsite parking requirements. As shown on the plans that were submitted, there are nine parking spaces that are proposed to be striped on the site, including two accessible spaces. Presently, there are also nine spaces on the site, so there's really no change in terms of the number of spaces located on the property. As Rob mentioned in his comments, in two thousand eighteen, HOE completed a strategic facility assessment where it looked at its parking within the village and reconfigured its school street parking lot as an enabling effort for this project. The result of that assessment relocated twenty-one of the thirty parking spaces off this property and onto the school street lot, and then formalized some existing spaces that were not striped on that school street parking lot. And I'm going to show you this in a minute. But the result of that work, that enabling work, made it so that there was no decrease overall in terms of the number of parking spaces in the village supporting the HOE buildings. And I'll just briefly show you these slides. So, this is the two thousand eighteen, before the work was done. You can see the dock, which is here, has thirty parking spaces located on it. Actually, I'll just point it here. Here we go, here, thirty parking spaces. And then if you look at this area off of school street, this is where the parking spaces were relocated. So, the total, again, before the work, was three-hundred-and-eighteen parking spaces in the village. This shows what exists currently. As you can see, there's now nine parking spaces on the waterfront and additional parking spaces off of the school street lot. The total number of parking spaces is still three-hundred-and-eighteen. That has not changed. And then, under proposed conditions, the parking spaces on the waterfront will be changed in terms of their location, but again, it still has nine, so the total number of parking spaces within the village does not change. With the reduction of about thirty-three-hundred square feet of building, square footage on the dock, and the relocation, as Rob mentioned, of several departments that have employees off of this site and onto HOE's Quissette campus, we're comfortable that maintaining this number of parking spaces continues to adequately serve HOE's needs. In addition, as mentioned in the VHB report that was submitted as part of the application materials, there are safe pedestrian accommodations leading from the school street parking lot to the subject property, including sidewalks on both sides of the street and crosswalks at key locations. HOE is also proposing to install bicycle racks on the, the property so that employees who choose to bike rather than drive to work will have a place to safely leave their bicycles. And as also described in the VHB memorandum that was submitted, HOE offers a shuttle service between this campus and its Quissette campus, so employees can park at Quissette, get on the shuttle, which runs every twenty minutes between the two sites, again, to minimize the number of parking spaces that are needed in the village. We've also sought relief from the bylaw's impervious coverage requirements. Right now, the site is non-conforming in terms of the amount of impervious coverage. Existing is about a hundred-and-seventeen square feet of impervious surfaces. Proposed will be slightly less, a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet of impervious surfaces. So, there is an increase of pervious surface by about a hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet. So, this is a quantitative improvement. The amount of green space is proposed to increase with this project. In addition to the quantitative improvement, we also suggest there's a qualitative improvement. Presently, right now, and those of you who went on the site visit saw the Paul's Mall area, which is the pervious area, Jeff described it earlier. Unlike existing conditions, what is proposed is a more formalized green space that Jeff described. It will offer views of the waterfront, and site amenities like benches are proposed to be incorporated. We've also sought relief from the front yard setback requirements, not for the building, as I mentioned, that complies with the front yard setback, but with respect to an electrical transformer. So, presently, the main Eversource power transformer that feeds the HOE power distribution transformer is located within the main level of the Island Building, which is proposed to be demolished. That's the building, as you may recall from the slides, that straddles the bulkhead, so it's partly on the pier and partly on land. The main HOE power distribution for the entire site, including Island, Bigelow, Smith, and the dock, is located in the second floor of the Island Building. Because Island is coming down, HOE is needing to obviously deal with how electric power is going to be coming into the site, and is working very closely with Eversource to reroute power throughout this property. Based on the discussions that it has, and those are ongoing with Eversource, it, it sounds like Eversource is likely to require two transformers to serve the property, including one that is right next to Water Street, so it has easy access to the transformer. Therefore, as part of this application, we are also... Therefore, as part of this application, we are also seeking a special permit to allow for a transformer to be no closer than 10.3 feet from Water Street. I would note, there is precedent in town, in fact, almost directly across the street from the site, for transformers within the front yard. And this is a shot of MBL's Crane Laboratory, and you can see there is a transformer right there off of Water Street. And again, this is almost diagonally across the street from the location. If a transformer does end up being sited in front of Bigelow, as we suspect Eversource is likely to require, and as shown on the site plans, Hui will implement screening measures to minimize the visibility of those transformers within the setback. Finally, in terms of the special permit, we've also sought relief from the landscape requirements contained in the bylaw. This is, given this unique use of the property as a working waterfront port, relief is requested from its Section 24, Article 24 of your bylaw, which contains the landscaping requirements. I note that the site is already non-conforming to those requirements. And although relief is requested, this redevelopment is consistent with many of the purposes and intents of that section. Specifically, drainage will be substantially improved. This was something that was carefully reviewed during the Conservation Commission review of this project. No significant trees are impacted by the redevelopment. The service areas will be largely screened. You saw the new enclosed dumpster area, which will be screened with fencing. Impervious surfaces will be slightly reduced, or they'll be, put another way, there'll be more pervious green space. Only minimal parking is proposed here. The majority of the parking, as I showed you, is proposed at the school street lot. And the building footprint and floor area have been minimized. Further, from a design perspective, a beautiful resilient building will replace several outdated sprawling buildings that are vulnerable to sea level rise. And finally, a more aesthetic, visible green space is proposed adjacent to the water. Wrapping up, I wanted to note that your review process is one of many that this project requires. In addition to your review locally, the project has already gone through the Conservation Commission process here in Falmouth, where the commission looked at issues such as development in the floodplain and wetland impacts, and issued an order of conditions approving the project. In addition, locally, the project will require a special permit under the zoning bylaw from the Select Board for Wetlands, and then also from the zoning board under the floodplain section of your bylaw. There are also many federal and state environmental permits that are required. We've completed two so far. That includes the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, so-called MEPA, which the Secretary signed off on ENF, an environmental notification form. And as also mentioned on this slide, the Falmouth Conservation Commission approved this under the State Wetlands Protection Act, in addition to the local bylaws. So wrapping up, and I appreciate very much your time, I wanted to end with this watercolor that was done by an artist, which notionally shows an artistic interpretation of the plans. They have changed slightly since this rendering was done, so it's not an exact depiction, but it provides some visual context of what a redeveloped site might look like here on the property. As I hope is evident from the site visit and from our presentation today, Hui and its team have worked really hard over the last several years, creating a resilient project that meets Hui's operational needs, hopefully for the next 80-plus years, while also being respectful of local, federal, and state regulations. And again, I want to thank you very much for your time, and our team is here if you have any questions of us.
So, shall we start where?
I'll go first.
Okay. Go first, Paul.
Well, thank you for, three of you, for a very thorough presentation. I particularly liked the photo presentation by Mr. Menier, helped to focus things in, and the architect did a terrific job pulling things together. And I especially liked the report that was submitted by Ms. Cox on the, all the changes being made. That was very helpful. And I have a couple of relatively minor comments. I was a planning board representative to the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, and we use Woods Hole group, who did the model for the Commonwealth that's been adopted. You use the same consultant, so clearly, there's no issue on sea level rise. But I have a minor comment. You're going to raise the footprint to a certain level, and then have provisions for further on. I'm just curious why you didn't go all the way up. Is that a cost consideration, or is it something that you're not sure of the rise?
You have to come up there, because the audience back home can't hear.
It's a minor point. I'm just curious why you didn't do it at one time.
It's a very good question, but there is, I think, a good answer for that, and that is that it's, going up four feet is really inconvenient from the perspective of doing our operations. We've gone to the point that the most we think we can do, and still tie our ships up, and tie them up, and have gangways and access to them, and as well, the site then would have a significantly higher grade to get from Water Street to the site if we were at four feet. And one thing maybe I should have mentioned in my remarks is that we have an initiative called Resilient Woods Hole, which is to get our partners, MBL and Fisheries, to all work together on ways that they might visualize the future, so that we don't end up with a, as a friend said, a 100-year dock in a 50-year town. So the idea is that if we build up partway, then we can manage our operations for a foreseeable future, but we're in a position then to adapt, once we've experienced what we really are experiencing with sea level rise, and do that in a way that hopefully the community is sort of coming along with us in this challenge of accommodating sea level rise.
Thank you. Also like a lot of issues, moving non-waterfront-related activities off-site and doing things like that, I think is a very wise thing to do. Is there an issue with the expansion of the steamship authority? They're moving their pier closer to the entrance to Hill Pond, and you're going to put a boat there by taking out that jetland area. Is that creating an issue for your development?
We have purposefully maintained the basic configuration of the dock. There's only a few minor adjustments. One's that notch that I was trying to find the visual of, and I think you could see it in Jeff's drawing. And then the other is the robotic support and the small boat. Those are very much similar to where they are, so they're, we're not really getting closer to the steamship. I will say that the steamship's new configuration has been a little bit challenging, but that's not because of where our dock is. It's stayed, it's been in the same place it's been for 53 years. But we don't think we've done anything to encroach further on their activities with our new design.
One other comment is, you've worked very well with the Woods Hole community, and obviously, they're very vocal whether anything happens in Woods Hole. They're concerned, obviously, with truck traffic going to the steamship authority. The removal of debris during this period is going to create a enormous amount of truck traffic to take this material offsite. I just hope you deal with that issue when its time comes. Now is not the time to do it, but it's going to create a real problem with the number of trucks removing the debris from demolition.
So we've created a, what we've called a Community Advisory Committee, and the idea is to have a mechanism for communicating with our neighbors as this project, really for the last over three years. So the idea was that this is, you know, nothing that we submitted to this time was a surprise. It's something that we've been talking about for a long time. The question you're asking about impacts has been a topic of concern that we've talked about. We don't have all the answers to that yet. We don't exactly know how this is going to get constructed. We don't, you know, we have to go through the process of that enabling work, which means there's lots of moving parts of what we're taking down when we're taking it down. And then, when it's constructed, is it constructed all in one fell swoop? Is it constructed in phases? Are there limits to what we can do in the wintertime versus the summertime? So there's a lot of moving parts to that. The reason I mentioned the Community Advisory Committee was the idea that we're trying to communicate as we go along throughout this whole process, so that we can engage them when these types of questions, you know, finally come to being finalized with a solution.
I have one final comment. Obviously, this facility on Woods Hole is important, not only at the Falmouth and the Commonwealth, but also to the federal government, and hopefully, this will be done before your 100th anniversary.
Or before I'm 100 years old.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. Are all the buildings going to be raised prior to this going up? It's not going to be done in a sequence, leaving some of the buildings so they can still be used? So, or is the site going to be wiped clean first, before the main building goes up?
I think that's a question similar to the answer that I gave Mr. Dreyer, and that is that I don't know all those details. It's possible that, I mean, the building that straddles the bulkhead obviously has to come down if we're going to build the dock.
Right.
The Smith Connector is a building that is shoreward of that, possibly could be left up for some interim period and to maintain some of the functionality. So those kind of details, I think, are still to be worked out. You know, we have to finalize our sequence. We have to get with a contractor and find out all the different permutations.
That's just my curiosity about how these projects progress.
It's possible that it wouldn't all be taken down at one time.
Okay. Any effort going to be made for renewable energy beyond the new building? Any solar panels or anything like that?
As an architect, I would, I'm always kind of pushing for renewable energy, solar panels, but Dave DeRosa here alerted me to a very unique issue here on the site, and that's the seagulls dropping shells to crack them open. And apparently, there have been issues essentially with the PVs, that it looks like asphalt, and they get destroyed rather quickly. That being said, the building wants to be incredibly forward-looking in terms of sustainability. We've talked a lot about resiliency here, but in terms of sustainability, one of the things that we're looking at essentially would be like air-cooled heat pumps, essentially for the heating and cooling of the building. So a lot of projects today are moving towards what we call all-electric, so you're trying to get off of fossil fuels. So as the grid in the state gets more based on electric and solar and renewables and more off fossil fuels, you have a building that's ready to kind of be adapted to that. Very early on, we looked into various geothermal approaches for the site, even seawater heat exchange. The state unfortunately got very concerned about that very quickly, so we're looking to other building systems associated with that. As a matter of course, a lot of high-performance envelope, we'd certainly be looking at. Things like DOAS, things like decoupling ventilation from heating and cooling. These are all scenarios that even the state environmental code is going to be dictating. Communities that are stretch code communities, very quickly, every year, it's going to get amped up. So the building's going to try to, aims to incorporate, you know, these sorts of things in the design, but the PV is kind of a unique thing.
Yeah. Is the new building going to be on pilings or just the existing land? Because there was a lot of controversy when Steamship was driving pilings for their new docks and things.
Yeah, a bit undetermined in the exact approach. So the, obviously, there's been a lot of construction out on the dock over the years. There's a lot of things in the ground over time, and two, there are actually, under consideration right now are three options. One is a giant mats lab to float the building, but that gets very, very costly. Bigelow is floated, it's like that. In order to do that, there potentially could be something called ground improvement, so essentially, you may need to dig up some ground and then improve it so that it can actually bear the weight of the building on it. The other would be a deep foundation system, so PIS, pressure-injected footing systems. So it's not necessarily a driven metal pile, but a similar deep foundation to get down to bearing. So those are all under consideration. Cost, availability, constructability, schedule, community impacts are all things that will need to be assessed before finalizing that decision.
Yeah. Too bad it couldn't do buildings with hydraulic piling, so you could just lift them up when the storm surge comes.
Yeah, that would be very interesting. The problem is, in not direct opposition to that, the dry floodproofing measures, essentially, the building itself has to be heavy enough so it doesn't become buoyant from like a big, from a structural consideration standpoint, so.
There's no breakaway panels or anything on this?
No, the intent is to do the dry floodproofing approach. You know, essentially, if Alvin is in the high bay, Dave cannot get Alvin out quickly, where there is a plan for other things on the dock, to move off the dock quickly if a storm's coming up the coast. The things in the high bay are certainly too large to move, so that led us to that approach.
Sounds good.
Jim?
You're not building anything in the velocity zone, right? You're retreating back from that, so that wouldn't be necessary? And that's why I was pleased, this is a major reduction in everything, moving it back, pervious and non-pervious. I actually thought you were going to be expanding, make it bigger. I'm pleased, it's a really big reduction, looks great.
I have a question about, what is dry floodproofing? This is my first introduction. Yeah, but how are they held in place?
Yep.
And how do you keep water from seeping under them?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think, let me see if I could. Let me go. Some dry, dry floodproofing.
I think they've got them around the aquarium station in Boston now.
Really?
Yeah, so essentially, what, so dry floodproofing, essentially, most of the building perimeter, where you don't have doors, is going to be designed like a bathtub. So behind the facade, there's essentially a two-foot-thick concrete wall, so water can't get through there. That leaves the issue of all the doors, and those high bay doors, and what do you do? And so these are deployable flood barriers, and they look, there's all sorts of different ones. The one here is called Aqua Fence, and this is actually my office in the Seaport District in Boston, which, if any of you are familiar, is very much in the bull's eye for storm surge. So essentially, these are deployable flood barrier systems, so the boxes are stored either on-site or up on the Quissette Campus. When there is a storm coming up the coast, Dave and his group would retrieve them, and then they attack, they interlock with one another, essentially, and then they interlock with the sides, the jams of the doors. And when the buoyancy of the floodwater gets on the backside, it kind of holds the whole thing in place without being, you know, toppled over. This is one system. There are a number. We would look at ones that are FEMA compliant. ASC 24 is the Civil Engineering Code requirement for dry floodproofing. It's also referenced by the Massachusetts Building Code. And we're also looking for approval from Army Corps. So there are a couple of different versions of this. Other ones, you slide in, they have little brackets on each side, and you, of the door, and you slide them in. Again, it'll come down to cost and procurement and things like that, but it would be something like this.
Okay.
May I have a follow-up on that? How long does it take to deploy a system like that for the size of the building you're talking about?
I can tell you that, you can see the gentleman in the rain suit there. We have a, I'm in, it used to be called Rushmore Wharf, but essentially, a group of maybe six or seven people can do that in a morning. By the time I go in the office, within five or six hours.
It's a matter of hours, not a day.
Yeah, it's not days. Essentially, there'll be pre-drilled holes around the building in the landscape. You just drop these things down, pop them up, and screw these receivers in. They're all in boxes, so when they come out in our building, the forklift just comes up, drops the boxes at the different locations. Our building, too, it surrounds the entire thing. It's not just at the entrances, so.
So how do you get in the building?
Actually, the interesting thing is, code will dictate that one of our egress doors be above the base flood elevation, and that's a code mandate, so people don't get trapped in the building.
Slide like out of an airplane.
Yeah, that's a detail, a detail.
Okay, and I have another question, and this has to do with the drivers on this. First of all, it's the age. Everything's done for. But beyond that, what's driving what you're doing is the whole idea of resiliency in terms of the increased water levels. And you had mentioned, Rob, that you probably have the greatest longitudinal measuring of this anyplace. But everything I read now, too, is, oh, we, it's happening faster and worse than was envisioned. So do you really feel, from what you've seen and what you've been reading, that this is a sufficient elevation? I don't know that there's an I don't know that there's an answer to it.
So, one of the benefits of having this ability to adapt is to experience what you're experiencing and adapt when you have to adapt. And the impact would be, if it happens more quickly than we're projecting, is that the lifespan of our facility would be shorter than what we would hope it to be now. We had a 50-year life this time around. We're shooting for an 80-year life, which is substantially longer. If it ended up being 60, I'd, well, I won't be around to find out if anybody's unhappy with that, but it would still be a pretty good outcome. So, that's the idea with being able to adapt. We can, we can adapt when we need to. We'll buy ourselves another handful of decades, and then we will find out what the outcome is at the end. So, that's, that's really the thinking behind it. There was an interesting article not long ago about New Bedford, that a study, similar study was done, and they came up with almost the exact same answer, which made me feel pretty good that, you know, we had, you know, done something totally independently, and they came up with a very similar answer as far as what their projections were. Anyhow.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
Thank you. John?
Unfortunately, I've been away. Could you tell us what the exterior of the building is going to be made of? Is it brick? Is it glass and steel? What is it going to look like?
Certainly. So, essentially, as the documents were submitted to this group, the current design thinking is that the building really is made of two, two components here. The lower portion of the building, which we call the working portion of the building, this is where the high bay is and everything else, that would be brick masonry, and that's what it's showing here. Smith and Bigelow and a lot of the other institutional projects, buildings in the neighborhood are brick masonry construction. So, that's what you're seeing around here on the design elevations as well. The second element of the building is this kind of folded plank roof. I didn't talk a lot about the design in the design of the building, but essentially, we are interested in kind of acknowledging Bigelow and the roof profile of Bigelow, and kind of taking that and interpreting it in a contemporary way. So, essentially, what you're seeing is two folded plates, two roof profiles on the building, and that roof itself kind of folds down and becomes the north elevation. That would be a standing seam metal. I don't know exactly what it is, kind of a darker color. We need to be very careful about the solidated air and what it can do over time. And then, the third element between that is just the glazing, the glass gasket between those two elements. So, we're trying to keep the palette very kind of simple, and also the use of brick to kind of tie it together with the institutional buildings around the village. That's the, thank you.
Thank you.
Cam?
So, this is probably one of the best presentations I've seen since I've been on the board. I'm sorry I didn't make the site visit. A little tear in my legament caused me not to come. So, I understand with the water rise, what about the velocity and wind and the impact of wind on the buildings?
Needs code. That's a great question. So, a couple of different things. We're finishing, my firm is finishing up a project at Cape Cod Community College right now. And I believe there's also a zoning stipulation here for windborne debris. So, a couple of things that we need to take into consideration. Obviously, first off, the structure of the building will have to be designed to meet the wind loads that occur today in the building code. So, essentially, there's, you know, wind loading on the building that's defined by the state building code. And those velocities change. You can look at a map all over Massachusetts, and they change. Down here on the Cape, they're definitely the highest in most of the state, just due to the fact of potential hurricanes. So, the building will be designed to resist those forces. The glazing itself will have to be debris resistant, so essentially, if there's windborne debris, the glass won't shatter. So, that's accomplished by putting a laminated kind of layer in it, like you would have, I'm not sure if cars have it, it's like tempered, but essentially, the glass won't break apart. It's held together with a glue if that happens. So, ultimately, when we get down the path, the glass will have to be certified to meet those requirements that are in the building code associated with it. So, from everything, you're absolutely right. This is a harsh environment that it exists, and constructing a building in this environment definitely has a lot more considerations. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, it's a costly endeavor, and that's why you never really want to build more than you have to down on the site, right? When you can do it elsewhere. And I think that goes to Rob's point as well.
Just one other question. With the boats that are there, I don't know if that's the right term, boat, ships, whatever, floating objects, how do you make sure that those stay where you want them to stay?
Joe, you want to add?
I don't know. Engineer.
House of Analysis.
You have to come up to the microphone, please. Unless you don't want the public to hear your answer.
My name is Joe Choi from WSPM, the dock engineer. So, the existing dock has mooring hardware to tie the boats up, but there's also further pieces of hardware that are inset called storm bollards. So, we're going to have any combination of those for extreme conditions. Obviously, considering sea level rise and the aggressive environments that are anticipated in the future, we're taking those higher wind speeds and currents and waves and the dynamic forces that come into play. So, that goes all into the engineering and the design of the dock.
I do want to just add one point to Joe's, which is, we agreed finally on a criteria for wind speed at which the vessels would be at the dock. But there'll be, when we exceed that or even approach that, the vessels will be gone, and they'll be underway. In fact, we were just in the Gulf of Mexico. We were in Tampa, and we got out of Tampa in time to avoid, you know, the hurricane there. So, it would be that type of a scenario. If we think it's approaching, you know, sort of that upper limit, we will sail.
Thank you.
Not that I don't trust Joe's design.
Ship won't end up on Water Street.
Right. Does anybody else on the board have any questions of this group? Yes, Paul?
I'd like to make one final comment. Has nothing to do with this project. We had a coastal resilience action committee. Recommended several times to get a coastal resilience director on staff. We made recommendation, numbered cases, select board approved funding to develop the scope of work last December. We're going to have this project and many other projects coming forward. I wrote to the select board a week ago, asked Mrs. Tella to include this item on the select board agenda. She acknowledged receipt. I hope they move forward, because there's really no one on staff can look at the issues related to this particular project. And this is the first of several we're going to have. So, I'd just like to make that comment publicly, having nothing to do with this project.
It's not only the projects, but I think the town needs to move forward with their own resiliency things that they need to accomplish, too.
By the way, I wrote the letter, not from the planning board, but as a former member of that committee.
Jed, Melinda, do you have anything you want to ask after this presentation and our questions?
Well, I have a simple curiosity question. You mentioned the dock has the ability to be raised a foot and a half. Is that, could you just describe how that is accomplished? And hopefully, that's not a stupid question.
No. In fact, we spent a lot of time, and yours, Joe, we all looking at options on that, and some more exotic than others. And the one we've chosen is fairly straightforward because of the balancing between the risk and the unknown and the costs and the benefits. So, the solution that we've arrived at is to build a dock that is two and a half feet higher, that the piles are capable of supporting, and then, in the future, be able to put a layer on top of that that's a foot and a half higher, which the pilings are still able to support without decreasing or diminishing our ability to operate. So, it's really putting a, another layer of a concrete deck on top of the new deck sometime in the future.
That makes sense.
And somebody mentioned hydraulic jackup and whatnot. We looked at all that for the dock. But, and we think there's some really creative solutions out there, but when you're on a, you know, when you have to have a pretty known end result and a cost, you know, contractors are a little afraid of things that are innovative. So, we ended up with something that's fairly straightforward. I did want to just, your comment that was unrelated to this, but I couldn't hold myself back, and that was about this resilient woods hole initiative that we have. The town is an important part of that. So, the three institutions are managing it and pushing it forward, but the town has been a partner. They've participated as members of the steering committee, and so that partnership is there, and I'm hoping that that will be, will grow. And if there is a person that takes the position that you're recommending, then we would have, you know, a real advocate inside to support this process.
I totally agree with you. And my understanding is, some of this work was funded by a grant. Grants are available to the town of Falmouth to deal with coastal resilience. And unless we get someone there, we're not going to be able to access those grants. So, it's important to continue those kinds of things. You've been ahead of the game. And coastal resilience had 14 sections to look at. We did one, you did the second one, there's a dozen more. But grants are available to do these kinds of things, and the town would be remiss if it didn't take advantage of that.
Thank you.
I just remembered Sandy. They were picking stuff up from the basement here before it hung left in New York. So, we need, right here, we need it in many places, in downtown Falmouth, too. So, yeah, I'm so pleased to have this report tonight. And how do you want to progress?
Pat, is there anybody in the public that?
They're all, I think they're all together, right?
They're all, okay, so you never know, it might be an outlier.
Yeah, no, no, I thought they were all.
So, how do you want us to progress with this now?
Right, so I think we have a couple of referrals that are still coming in. We heard from the water department, I think just today, indicating that they may be submitting a referral soon. I did want to touch base with the fire department. That was going to be my second question. I don't recall if you had consulted with the fire department. If not, we'll just simply run the schematic that you, that they provided in the application to the fire department, just to get their referral as well. So, perhaps just to continue to the next meeting date, if that's available.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have spoken to the fire department and got the truck template from them, which we've run through the site. It's shown on the plans, but obviously, if they have any additional questions, we're happy to continue that dialogue.
Perfect.
And we are limited. We had a lot more tonight than what our limitations under the Dover Amendment are. But it just really fills the picture in nicely. Thank you. So, we will continue this until the 25th.
Correct. That is the next meeting date.
Yeah.
Want to draft a motion?
No, we've got more information to come in. But, I mean, if you want to have a draft, if you feel that we're far enough ahead.
We're always working on draft motions. We just have them in our pockets.
(Laughter).
But yes, we can certainly continue working on that. We'll continue to reach out to the applicant and also just make sure those referrals come in.
The outstanding issues are relatively minor. We have to move forward, get the positive motion, and they don't have to come back to you that often. We need a lot of money sitting out there with everybody coming in here.
Certainly, certainly.
So, no reason to hold it up.
We work at your direction. So, if you'd like us to draft a positive motion, we can do so.
I don't think there's anybody on the board that has any problems with this. Is there?
As long as the minor issues are cleared up.
We'll put through it next week.
Sure.
To me, it's completely obvious that the heights have to go up and all kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't think there's any.
They'd be remiss if they didn't.
Right. You got it. So, I don't think there's any problem with drafting a positive motion.
Sure. We'll have it ready for the next meeting, and, like I said, those referrals.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for this presentation.
Very good.
The eyes are so dry.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Jed, may I ask you to direct this? The next thing on the agenda, of course, is the public hearings slash planning board discussion, and I can see there's so much public out there, too many input for discussers. And then, the recommendation to town meeting from the board.
Sure.
So, would you mind directing that?
Absolutely.
Because I know you're the one that has had the correspondence with Bob.
Yeah, so, included in your packet tonight is a brief memo that I put together, which outlined the comments that we've, that the board has received from, all from Attorney Amet in regards to the current recodified bylaw. You all are no strangers to those, to those comments. They're also attached as an email form as well as a language for the mixed commercial and residential uses in the business district. So, as I've mentioned, I've outlined the comments, and then, just below that, the changes that our consultant has made, Bob Mitchell, in respect to those comments that have been received. So, just going through them very quickly, a lot of what Bob sent in was, were Scrivener's errors. So, it's just references that had to just be corrected, and he noted the reasons for that just down in below. But that new language that we went through with the mixed residential and commercial in the business district, that was important language. So, we just wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with the addition of that in the use table. So, that'll be in section 240, 6.2B. And then, as I mentioned, Bob Mitchell went through the bylaw one more time. And, you know, as you can imagine, he stared at this thing for an awfully long time, but went through it one more time to check all of the internal references, because as you remember, adding in new sections like Mr. Cod and adjusting the use tables, sometimes those things sort of move, and so they go from 11.7 to now 11.8 or what have you. So, he went through it all and made sure all those references were accurate. He adjusted the table of contents. So, essentially, we've addressed all the comments that we've received during this public hearing. And based on the limited public that are here tonight, you may close the hearing, take it under advisement, and discuss it amongst yourselves, and then potentially give us a, well, I shouldn't say potentially. We would love to see a recommendation so that we can provide that to the town manager's office so that that can be forwarded for the town meeting, which is just about a month away.
So, I'll move to close the hearing.
I just want to clarify two things. I've recently been told that the multi-use aspect is allowed in the bylaw that there was uses for, even though that our consultant said no, that we couldn't do it, and it's now been fine. I had pointed out that I saw the language, and that's now going to be included in the table. So, it's not going to say no. It's going to say, and I've also heard that the building inspector now thinks there's a special permit that's allowable for other uses in the tech park, for other business uses such as shopping centers or warehouses and other things, that it's a special permit use. Even though we were told no it isn't, that should be in the table as a SP for a special permit. Have you heard the same thing?
Well, we've, we addressed, that was a comment that you had before we even opened the hearing, I believe, or I think it was the first night of the hearing, you made the comment about the warehousing and storage.
Right, but the building inspector now is of the mind that it is allowed as a special permit.
I believe that is.
His previous decision that it wasn't, but there's language that he found by reading things more deeply, has been found that it's been there all along.
Okay.
As long as those things, two things are still good, I'm real happy.
Yeah, we took care of your initial comment, and Bob Mitchell found the language.
Okay.
And we put it into the, into the use table as a, as a special permit.
That's, that's good.
But you also have to be careful, too, because they operate under their own rules.
No, but the opinion is that it's there.
Yeah, but they wouldn't allow a shopping center there.
By a special permit, it's allowed.
Oh.
We took care of that comment. We also took care of the multiple use.
Other business uses.
Yeah.
Which is very vague, which leaves it up for a special permit that can be decided on a case-by-case basis. That's the whole point.
Yeah. So, we just made sure that the exact language that's found in, you know, your existing bylaw made its way into the use table for that industrial district.
Well, instead of a no, it's an SP.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay, Bob, you wanted to move to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing. Move to close the hearing.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then, is there discussion? Planning board now can discuss it? I think we discuss it.
We discuss it a lot.
Okay, so not hearing any discussion, I would need a motion that we recommend the zoning bylaw recodification as printed to the fall town warrant.
Inclusive of all of the comments or all of the changes that have been made as outlined in this document?
Well, that's what that is.
Great.
From the wording there.
Great.
So do we need to, so move? Okay.
Second.
Did we leave anything out?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose this thing?
Excellent, unanimous.
Whoa, okay. We've put that baby to bed. Committee reports. You have an announcement you would like to make?
Announcement, I just want to tell everybody that this Saturday from 6:00 to 8:30 PM is the Jazz Stroll on Main Street, and it's being held at four different locations along it, so it changes every hour, so you can start off on the gallery on Main, which is down near Library Square, and it moves on hourly basis, moving all the way up to the Fisherman's Pantry at 7:30 or 8 o'clock. And there is one hour at the gallery, my gallery on Main Street, we're having a band there for, it's Jazz Till Dawn, and it's refreshments and open to the public, and it should be a good time. And so there's, there's information here if they want it.
Pam didn't give them. She took mine.
Grabby fingers.
She took mine.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think if we've still got listeners out there, quite of interest, people in town.
Yeah, it hasn't been held for two years because of COVID, so it is a fun event. People forgot about it.
Yeah. I understood there was no general correspondence tonight.
There was none.
Okay. Future agenda items. And this is, next meeting is October 25th, and this is what we're all waiting for.
Move to adjourn.
All right.[1693.62]